Start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So everyone could stand and join us, please. We'll start. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Second order of business is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Anyone would like to make?
Um, do you want to reach first?
Nobody. Okay. Some minutes to approve. Minutes to approve tonight are minutes from February 20th. The motion is moved to accept and approve the meeting minutes of February 20th, 2018, as shown. Give a second. A second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments about the, um, minutes, February 20th? All those in favor of approving? Thank you. Correspondence items tonight, um, A through I. We'll make a motion that we move to accept the list of correspondences as shown, A through I. Give a second.
A second.
Carol. Any questions or comments about the, um, correspondence items? Okay. All right. All those in favor of accepting the correspondence items? Two items on the consent agenda this week, and a move that we accept and approve the consent item, consent agenda as shown, items A and B. A second.
Second.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about these two items? All those in favor? All right. Thank you. All right. Item number five is the, um, proposal for an Earth Day celebration. Anybody that wants a...
Larry.
The, um, motion is to move to accept and approve this one day permit for the current proposed Earth Day, planned celebration on Sunday, April 22nd, 2018. Report from DPW for barricades provides sufficient space for traffic control and public safety. Give a second.
A second.
Okay. All right.
We had a meeting this afternoon, and I wasn't able to get the staples. There was two or three classes.
They were saying...
Those are the proposed routes. April 22nd is, of this year, is the nationally acknowledged Earth Day. And we're, um, requesting that the town approve, uh, a celebration, uh, on that date. We had presented, um, a proposal, and unfortunately, the initial proposal was, was missing a couple of items, and I had to submit an amended proposal. So we can discuss that as, as needed. But it's, uh, the idea is to involve the community and surrounding communities in a, uh, sort of a celebration of our connection with, with the earth and, um, environment, environment. We plan to have a, uh, I guess there's a, uh, a group that has, um, honeybees, and they wanted to sort of have the name of the, of the hive, um, adjunct to a ceremony and have that in the morning. Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Rochelle Lerner, who's a science teacher at the high school, uh, has been mentoring the, uh, Maynard High School Green Committee, and every year they do a river cleanup and town cleanup. And she, uh, wanted to organize a, uh, a cleanup, uh, on that date for a couple hours or so. Uh, this, we had a meeting this afternoon, and when we were advised that probably cleaning up the river, um, in mid to late April is probably a little, um, let's say, it's, it's probably not the best time of the year to do that. So an alternative proposal, which is the, the first map I showed you, is we have a, um, sort of break up into groups and go around the town, bagging up litter. We have the proposed routes that we're gonna do it. Apparently, there was an organization a few years ago, I don't know if they're still, still active or not, they're called the Litter League.
Yeah.
So, um, we can try to connect up with them, but it's the same idea. It's, uh, it's gonna be probably too cold and maybe a little too hazardous to be walking along the river in mid to late April, so, uh, basically break up into groups and do that for a couple of hours or so. We have a, um, community activities which are going to be fairly diverse. Uh, gonna be music, face painting, art shows, craft tables, and so forth, uh, from about 1:00 to 3:30. Now, we did receive approval from the, uh, Mill and Main Organization to use their, um, their parking area, and then we're speaking of the concrete parking area.
Which one?
3:30.
Which, which parking area?
The, uh, the concrete area closest to the buildings themselves. And the, uh, from 2:30 to 3:15 roughly, we're gonna have a river dedication procession from Mill, from the Mill Pond Parking Area with the Earth, Earth floats, which are biodegradable floats. They've been doing this in Concord. As a matter of fact, they've, they've placed the, uh, floats in the, in the river that flows into the, uh, National Park area with no issues from the park area at all. They're just biodegradable.
Where are those going in the water?
They're going in the water, the second map shows the, uh, planned route of the procession. The, um, the one area that where we'll be crossing a major road, and we're asking, I gave copies to, uh, Chief Dubois of the proposal and the amended proposal, just to keep him up to, up to snuff on, on our intentions. So we, you know, we'll probably request, uh, some sort of, uh, police coverage for the, uh, group where they cross, at the crosswalk on Main Street by the parking area. And we'll be walking along, uh, River, I mean, Railroad Street and along the river there. And then at that, um, the end, uh, where it, where it re-meets the river is where we would be, sort of letting our, our biodegradable floats go on the river. Now, I understand that there's a, um, Little League parade that's, I guess, mustering about 12:30 or so in the parking area, but we believe that not everybody at the muster will be, will be going on the parade. Some people will be staying. And, um, it's sort of a win-win for both groups because, uh, early, um, participants of our group can be, um, interacting with the, uh, with the mustering of the Little League. And people who don't wanna go on the parade can sort of hang on and engage in the community activities that, that we will be providing. So, uh...
So Larry, the parking lot that you're planning on sort of having the main, um, events at, is the one that the farmer's market is in?
Right, the area where the farmer's...
Not over where the, where the carnival was last?
No, 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 no.
Okay, so you're... Okay.
Yeah, we have, we specifically requested and received permission from the Mill and Main for the use of their parking lot.
The parking lot that the farmer's market is in?
Is contiguous with the buildings.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? I gotta look at that map. It looks like the red line that you've drawn is not accurate to what you're just presented. Um, see, it, it, it has you traveling down Railroad Street from Florida Park.
I thought it was going down the, um, the...
Rail trail.
The rail trail.
Which one?
Yeah. It's supposed to be the rail trail.
Okay, so essentially, that's correct, but you have them starting over at Florida Park, uh, near the municipal parking lot. And I think what you're suggesting is that the mill is giving you permission to use their newly constructed area on Main Street?
No.
No, the paved area, paved parking lot.
The area where the farmer's market is.
Well, if that's the case, then if they're gonna start at that parking lot, that's where he says they're, so then he's gonna walk down to Florida Park and put boat launch or, or put things into the river there? You're about 15 feet above the river at that point.
At the new, it's, I think, where you're dropping the stuff into the river, and I don't know, but is on the new, put the new crossbridge that they put up to replace the...
Right, we're supposed to be following the rail trail.
Rail trail to where the bridge is.
You're 15 feet above the river at that point.
Yeah. It's high.
Well, we can, um...
Just wanted to make sure I'm understanding the map, 'cause I understood your description is going from the mill to, I thought you were saying you were gonna go to Ice House Landing, where you can essentially be at the river's edge.
Well, that's, that was an earlier part of the discussion. I've missed a couple of meetings, and I was advised today that it was, uh, basically not gonna be at the Ice House Landing, but, but in this area here. And this, uh, one of, one of the high school students prepared the maps for me, a member of the Green Committee, and, um, that's the basis of what I'm going on. We can, you know, tweak this to where it's more practicable for the intended purpose of launching the, uh, the floats. But the only area I think that we really have an issue with, uh, the public safety is crossing the Main Street at the crosswalk.
And if you went the other way, you'd have a problem at 1:17, and, and the, uh, if you went down to Ice House Landing, you would have a, you would have a crossing at 1:17, which is probably more dangerous than the one at Main Street.
Okay. So I, um, you know, we can do a, a sighting of specifically where it is, but, um, any, any other questions?
Well, they're using the same parking lot. So... Yeah, I guess the question is, are you gonna drop something from 15 feet down into the river? This was Andrew's, to Andrew's point is a, is a, is a question. There's a, you know, and the second question is, where is the, um, where is the honeybee queen naming ceremony gonna take place? Which I can't believe I just said those words, but where will the honeybee...
Say that every meeting.
How will the honeybee meadow queen bee naming ceremony take place? At the honeybee meadow or at the, the parking lot? Because if you're gonna do it at the honeybee meadow, you're gonna worry about people getting from Fowler, the old Fowler, Art Space, down to the parking lot. So I'm just kinda, if...
Well, that, this is kind of a, a separate thing. An independent, uh, group was putting together the honeybee, uh, queen naming, so we, we include her in the, um, in the list of events, 'cause people can go, just like with, uh, First Day, you know, there's a lot of different places you can go for events.
It is at the honeybee meadow, which is at Art Space. It's at 10:00 AM.
That'll just be a different venue for a different event.
A previously planned event.
It sort of fits in with our general, our general theme, so we included it. But it's not something that she is, uh, participating within our group to do.
Okay, so it's, so it doesn't even need to be on this permit? In a sense?
I'm just, I was just trying to be thorough as far as the list of...
I'm just, I'm just looking, 'cause we have to issue a permit based on what we're reading.
Yes.
And what we're reading would suggest that we have a event taking place at 10:00 to 11:00 at Fowler Art Space, and then making its way down to the other. That's what, if you read what we're looking at, that's what it's suggesting. So I'm just asking the question for clarification. And the river cleanup is not gonna take place?
Correct. I just heard, um, was informed of that today, so...
So what, people are gonna be at, just follow along so I understand. We're gonna, you're gonna start at what time at the parking lot, 1:30 or earlier?
Uh, the 1:00 is going to be the, um, this, where the siteous of the events are going, the, uh, face painting and, um, yoga, and I guess the musical stuff, and people will be making, um, Earth floats, anybody wants to participate and, and put one in the river.
Okay, so at 1:00, the Gavitt Mill and Main, there's gonna be arts and crafts and other things. People are gonna make, um, I think it said, uh, floats and something, uh, sing, one stick puppets or something, puppets, stick puppets?
Puppet on a stick. I have no idea what that is, but...
So then, then that group is gonna...
Members of that group, they choose.
That group is gonna go to someplace along the river?
Right. Yeah, we, we can...
Parade type thing, drop their floats in the river, and then walk back with their puppets? Or are they gonna continue on and then...
No, that, that's, that's basically the culmination.
And then is there still a second group that's gonna do, um, you talked about Litter League, are there, is there a second group with Ms. Rochelle Lerner that's gonna do town cleanup? So there's two different sets of people?
Well, it's all, it's all, except for the, the honeybee thing which was added, um, the, um, it's all sort of a continuous thing. The, anybody who wants to participate in the town cleanup can work with Rochelle Lerner's group, the, uh, High School Green Committee, and she'll have the yellow bags. She's, she's already talked with DPW about that. And they go around with the old bags and picking up, uh, picking up trash in the areas that were designated here.
So I, I guess the, the question is just from kind of thinking of a, so from a perspective, we're looking at it in two directions. One, which is kind of understanding it as a program of events, as a town resident who wants to participate in Earth Day. And then the second piece, which is kind of what we're permitting for. So I think the, so for the town cleanup, I guess the, the question is, are they going to recognize that this is a bit in flux right now? Is the plan that people, anyone who wants to can gather, plan on gathering at 1:00 at the same spot in the parking lot, and there'll be a table where people are sending folks out with yellow bags to do trash pickup? Or is that gonna get...
Well, the, the trash pickup is 11:00 to 1:00.
Okay.
So that will be sort of done. The bags will be placed at the locations, um, predetermined with the, uh, DPW as to the pickup areas, then people who are doing the cleanup will return, um, and, uh, participate at some point in the, you know, two and a half hour, uh, uh, event.
Cool.
The face painting, the music, yoga, and so forth.
And then I guess my only other question, 'cause I, I'm just miss, it's not on the top of mind, is, 'cause I, so the day will overlap with the, um, Little League parade, which is also happening that day.
Same spot.
Mustering at the same time. Is their route...
Down Main Street.
They're going straight down Main Street, not crossing over to the, uh, not crossing over at the same spot.
Well, they're, they're starting at that same parking lot at approximately noon time.
Okay, so they'll be earlier. Okay.
But if people are arriving to the 1:00 community events, I'm not sure that it's a good idea to have them trying to pull into that parking lot while the Little League people may be exiting. They don't start necessarily promptly at noon time. I reached out to them today and have not heard back yet about getting a little bit more detail about how their event launches.
Launches.
But it's dozens and dozens of Little Leaguers, some of their parents.
I guess what I'm wondering to that point is whether or not, if there's some flexibility for the program, organizing the start times in such a way so that if people, so hypothetically, if the, if the Little League march kicks off at noon, does it make more sense to try and have the community activities piece of Earth Day start earlier as well, so that you might have more mix of people in the same spot, be able to kind of, to use a bee analogy, cross-pollinate the events?
The, the start time is less a concern to me. I would encourage the organizers to figure that out. Um, I would suggest that all the parking take place in the larger mill parking lots, and folks walk over to the farmer's market lot, the Main Street lot, uh, for the events. Uh, if they're trying to park there while the parade is starting, or it's just gonna be a logistical nightmare there. I do understand that the Little League parents tend to park in the large lot, 'cause after the event ends at Crowe Park, they then walk back to the Seven Street lot and get in their cars. So if this group also was encouraged to park there, it might make the logistics work better.
The Little League event itself is typically at Alumni Field, and that's where they, they meet up and they play, uh, a couple innings. Each team gets to play a couple innings on the football field. Other kids are on DJ's Field and everything else. Um, so, yeah, and Wally the Green Monster's there, and I throw the ball over the screen. That's what happens every year. So, um, that, but in, in answer to your question, relative to how the parade starts, traditionally, um, the, the head of the Little League is working with the police, and the police department says, "Okay, we're going." The lights go on, and the kids just start to walk. And the, the police department and the fire department lead the procession.
My concern being that, let's say it starts at 10 past 12. If people are starting to arrive for, uh, the Earth Day events in that same time, that's the logistic I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, I get that concern.
What do we think is the best way forward to try and...
So... I guess, I guess we need a, I think we need a little bit of a better map, um, for both the police department and the DPW, so everybody has an understanding exactly where you would need crossing assistance and/or barricades to suggest that, you know, something's gonna take place somewhere or anything like that. 'Cause I don't, I don't know that the map that we have actually shows you where those type of things will take place. So they only, the, the police department and the DPW both need to, um, plan ahead and have a, a better understanding than, than I have, or I think anyone up here has as to exactly where you're gonna anticipate needing help from those, those groups, assistance from those groups.
I guess one comment, one question. The comment is, yeah, we would wanna define exactly where the litter's gonna be picked up and coordinate where the trash bags are gonna be left.
Right.
'Cause I, I don't, well, I guess I'll have some guys working for the barricades at the Little League parade that day. They might not be on still at the end of the day when the trash bags need to be picked up, so those might be left there overnight. They just need to be at designated locations, we can pick them up Monday morning.
What have they done in the past, you know, Aaron? 'Cause this is not a new, the Little, the Little League used to do it, as was mentioned.
So we coordinated with Little League. They would contact us, we'd designate the location of where to, where to place the bags, and then we would pick them up the next day.
So then we should just do the same thing here?
Right.
Yeah.
And then my only other comment was, uh, I guess question is, what are the biodegradable floats made out of? And my concern is putting anything into the river.
Well, again, they're, the, this was, uh, I was approached by the Umbrella, um, Community Arts Center out of Concord, and they've been doing Earth Days, and they're reaching out to surrounding communities to do Earth Day celebrations. Matter of fact, uh, they have one in, uh, in Lowell that's been so successful that they now have an Earth Month. In Concord, they place these floats, which are like, I think, just twigs and twine, basically, uh, in the river, and they float into the Nat, uh, National Park. And there's, and the history is that there's, there's no issue with that at all. So, uh, and the people at the Umbrella are very, I mean, they would be sort of defeat the, the purpose and concept of Earth Day is to throw plastic something into the river. And with respect to, uh, the, the cleanup, uh, I was assured by, uh, by the science teacher at the high school, Ms. Rochelle Lerner, who has the Green Committee, and they do this every, every year, they have cleanups. And she said that she already talked with the DPW about locations for drop off and so forth. I can, I can ask for greater specificity from her as to what she understands that to be. And, um, as far as the, uh, police, you know, we're willing to, um, to, uh, you know, provide, uh, sufficient funding for any sort of additional police coverage that might be needed, uh, to, you know, not unduly tax, uh, the town's resources or to, uh, um, sort of piggyback onto the Little League. We're not, that's not our intention, so anything with respect to that goes. But, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, the sense that we need better maps. I just, the maps I gave you, the ones I got this afternoon, and I couldn't get the staples to make them, make them prettier. Sorry. It's my, uh, my funky printer that crankles out for you, so I can try to, I can try to be more specific about the, uh, about the, uh, the routes of the cleanup and also the, uh, procession route and where, you know, we don't have to end up 15 feet above the river.
I think that's, I think that's important.
I agree.
As far as the DPW goes, he's the director of the DPW, so if we've had a conversation with the DPW, he would be the guy that would know. And I haven't asked, and I don't know that anyone up here suggested, if we're gonna, you know, ask you to, um, you know, uh, pay the police or anything like that. We're just trying to find out, you know, when we go to tell them what we want done, we need to know the answer to the question, where and how. And that's what we need to know, and this map doesn't tell us that.
Right.
So we need a, we need a better map for a better understanding of what the, um, actual route is gonna be, where the actual drop into the river is gonna be, because I would think we wanna have some type of safety personnel in the area, um, in case somebody slips or falls or anything else. And there's not too many places along the river where we have a, a safe place to lean over and put something in the river. Most of the river in the places where it runs through the downtown area, to Andrew's point, is either right by the mill, where, you know, where it goes behind, behind the mill, behind this building, and around, and the last place where it's really low enough to do that is behind this building. And then, once you get through there, you're, you're 10 or 15 feet above all the way down until you get to, um...
Past the Legion.
Past, past the Alps.
Yeah.
On the, on the Alps. So it goes down that far, so it goes down that far before you're actually able to have a child or, you know, somebody take, uh...
Right.
Something that they worked on and made and actually see it drop into the river, aside from dropping it 10 to 15 feet above. So we need to find a place where that can happen.
Okay. I, no, I appreciate it. I'm, I'm sort of like...
There's also, at that time of the year, if you're sort of a little, um, the river's running, uh, 'cause we've gotten the snow, maybe the snow will be gone, but the snow, the snowmelt is going, and the river is really high. I'm wondering if as an alternative, and I'm not saying this, this is a must-have, but as an alternative, just so that you can move forward, is there a way to use the Mill Pond to put the biodegradable stuff in, or do they want it to flow, you know?
Oh, I'm thinking flowing, but we did, uh, request use of the pond and were approved, but at the time, we basically were, uh, we expressed consideration that it'd be more of an aesthetic backdrop for what we're doing. Um, I can approach them about putting in...
Because it would just be the dropping, I, I remember there was some talk about using it for kayaks or something, and I was concerned about that from a safety perspective, with people out in kayaks.
Right.
But for dropping in biodegradable boats for the floats, for the first...
Little floats.
Yeah.
If you're not, if, from the way the map looks, the, the downtown cleanup is gonna actually be more or less by a, a separate group of older, I would assume older kids, older kids and adults for the most part, right? So if you were to take the parking lot at the mill and split it down the middle, and on one side is the Little League, on the other side is your group, and you were to do all your stuff at one end and they did their stuff at the other, they could go out and take a right and move, you're fine. My suggestion would be you guys come out of the parking lot, straight down, across the street here, go behind this building and launch the, the things, because it's, it's low, it's, it's water level, there's a couple picnic tables behind there, it's, it's a, an area where people could congregate to watch it happen, and there's nowhere else to congregate along the river either. You could do it here, and you would, you would solve an awful lot of problems about walking around town, and you would have a safe place for people to congregate, and then you would do some activities behind... and then you would do some activities behind us, because there is a grassy area down there. And there's also parking down there.
Yeah, I, I think the idea, idea of a procession does not mean it has to be a half a mile in, in, in walking, so.
I'm gonna guess it's gonna be short legs, and they're not gonna wanna proceed too far anyway. Go the other direction, you're gonna have to go to the Elks to find a safe place. Wherever it's kids, and they come back here, it's a short walk here, they can do their thing, and then go back to whatever other activities you have, because if you go back the other way, once you go down and start walking around through downtown, you're gonna lose everybody, no one's coming back. If you do the things you wanna do, and then, okay, at two o'clock, we're gonna walk down and release the floats, and do the puppet parade or whatever, come this way, do it behind here, you're done, and go back and continue on with the activities, and enjoy the rest of the afternoon without walking all the way through downtown and having that problem. You solve an awful lot of problems that way, and you still have the event, and, and the Earth Day people, you know, Little League or whoever, can, they can do their thing at the same time. But, it might be easier to do it here, because that's the only place the river touches a level spot.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that area. I not, I personally have not walked the route that was presented, because I just received that a few hours ago, so.
Yes.
So, I apologize for that.
It's a tougher way to find a spot to put something in, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that Mr. Schultz coordinate this with the police PD and DPW before it gets approved. Sounds like there's general agreement with this, but we have some details.
I mean, we can-
But also with the other four groups that are involved on that day, that everybody's on the same page about these logistics. Because I don't know what's happening with the Little League parking. Your, your suggestion, I think, is terrific, that the distance from the mill parking lot to here is probably the same as the one on the map route, and it is a better launch point. So.
Perfect. And I'll also get a chance, I think, to hear Aaron's point, if there's any additional documentation that he wants, just to have as part of the record.
Street crossings, barricades needed, where the litter's gonna be picked up, where people are gonna be parking, and better route maps.
And the evidence point about the, the drop into the river.
I want to use only approval contingent on those things happening as well, in this follow-up, you know. So, I think we can do it that way. Approval contingent on, on those things taking place with the police and the DPW and, you know, the Honeymoon Meadow and all those folks. Everyone, everyone gets on the same page, so we know exactly what's going on. If we're gonna start to involve, you know, police officers and public safety officials, we need to know exactly what we're doing, and we have, right now, we all know, so.
We could provide you with like, an agenda topic next time that says it's all been signed off on on our end, on the staff level?
Yeah, okay. All right. So, I'm gonna change this motion. I'm gonna do a motion, and the motion is gonna become, move to accept and approve the one-day permit for the Earth Day Mainers proposal on Sunday, April twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. Contingent on agreements between the, what's the name of the group, what's, what's the name group, again?
Oh, the Earth Day Mainers.
Yeah, so.
Event organizers?
Contingent, yeah, contingent on agreement between the Earth Day organizing, organizing group, and the Mainers Police Department, and Mainers DPW, and Town Administrator's Office.
Town Administrator's Office.
Give a second.
Attention.
Anyone else that is concerned about that type of situation? All's in favor?
Okay, thank you very much for your time, and consideration.
Do you want, do you want to, do you have, you have his email address? You guys have his?
Yes, yes.
Just email him a phone sheet, email, an IR email, or anyone else?
I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
All right.
A wheat ball. Come on. Jack?
Who are you going for?
Nice to see you. All right, item number six is a motion that we move to authorize the acting town administrator to review and approve the expenditure of funds of up to two thousand eight hundred dollars from the downtown enhancement fund, but it's admitted BEAP application for a wheat ball, as shown. Give me a second.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll speak to it.
Oh, he's so speedy.
Speedy, speedy. All right. How you doing?
Very good.
What are you doing?
Oh.
What do you wanna do? We know, so we, we see the sign, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we wanna put a new sign.
Okay, and it's, so it's, the only question is, it's just a, it's just a backlit sign, it's going on, right?
No, the, this is a very straightforward proposal under the BEAP program, facade improvement, and if I perhaps bring your attention to within the multiple pages, this particular document, because this one shows the sign, which is overhead lit, and the two awnings for which the grant is applied for. And the quotation in the back shows the amount of dollars, and it's a standard fifty percent reimbursement to the applicant. And I assume that all of you have either met, but let me introduce Alonso Moreno, as he and his wife Alma, own the restaurant, which is doing quite well in town.
Spent a lot of time in front of us last year.
My, my comment is, and I brought this up the last time that we approved a BEAP on, I think it was the Indian Restaurant that started it. My concern is the gradual creep into advertisement for businesses, and using public funds for businesses themselves versus the facade themselves. I'm not going to say I'm opposed to this, but I'm concerned about the use of public money in that fashion. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about it, but, you know, when does, when is too much, too much? What happens if we give a, an improvement thing, a sign, and then the business goes out of business three weeks later, and we spent eighteen, that's not gonna happen with you, I realize that. You're probably one of the most popular businesses in town, and we hope you stay forever. But that's my concern. And I, I know that you told me the last time that you guys had discussed that at the EDC as part of the, the whole process. Has this changed? Is this?
No, excuse me. We have continued to discuss this with each of the situations that come up, and it is consensus, and I think that's a fair statement within the Economic Development Committee, that, not that we would understand if somebody was gonna go out of business within a few weeks, but it's an acceptable risk
That's an exaggeration, of course.
To, to go ahead and do this kind of thing. The typical business cycles are, particularly in the restaurant business, are fairly short. People have already been here a number of years. And so, basically, the Economic Development Committee has said, this is an acceptable risk, and it's a fair use, even though we recognize, yes, at some point, the business may change hands, or one organization with a business might decide to go into a different, you know, kind of restaurant, and have to change signs, and so forth and so on. So, we consider it a reasonable use of town funds.
I would think, too, given that it's a fifty-fifty split, with the business owner, they've got skin in the game, too, so they're not gonna make that significant investment on a sign that's, you know, what, fifty-six hundred dollars, unless they're intending to stay there for a considerable amount of time.
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons that we've, just, just so the board understands, the program specifics are around fifty percent. We are willing, depending on what the application looks for, to vary from that, and in fact, we have talked in a couple of cases of, almost to your point, David, that maybe we would only reimburse it a twenty percent or twenty-five percent kind of thing. At the moment, we're at the fifty percent thing, and as you point out, the business owner has, is making commitments to that business.
Do you have a color printer?
Sorry?
I do, actually. Use the color printer next time, will you?
Send it to me.
Twenty-five printers in this building, we can't see anything in color. We'd like to see it in color. I'm, I'm being funny, but I'm not, because it would be nice to see it in color, but I, I, you know, to, to the point of, you know, you guys, you guys continue to make an investment in Mainers and, and your business, and your business is very well-received, and, you know, a great place to go for a meal, and it's just, you know, it's nice to see people making a little bit of investment back into the town. Did you guys, did you guys, when we did the sidewalk improvements there, did you guys pay for part of that?
That one is still open.
Yeah, that one's still open.
We didn't finish it? Is that supposed to take place?
This spring.
So, it's this spring, and they're paying part of that as well?
Yes. For the, for the Ballers.
Right, so you're paying, all right, so, I mean, this is a continuation, I don't know that, I mean, I don't know, these signs, these signs don't look any bigger than the Oberschon signs you're on the building next door for a little years, or any other signs in town, so.
No, I don't have a problem with the signs.
I, I don't know that.
I'd say an improvement's an improvement.
It's an improvement.
Do you have other businesses fighting over the money?
We're beginning to get, now that these are becoming visible, we're beginning to get a stronger flow of these. And, no, we haven't run out of money, and there's still a pool of funds, which we're actually trying to be fairly active about getting the local businesses to come in and make applications.
We're gonna run out of money if we stop giving it to them.
Exactly. So, I, I mean, the money's there, it's, it's set aside for improvement. I think we've had the reputation, whether it's earned or not, as not being nice enough to small businesses in town. This is one way to actually help small businesses, right? It's another reinvestment of our, of our monies back in the town. I see no conflict with it. The, the business owners are typically putting in up to fifty percent of the funds matching. If we get to a point where a lot of businesses are clamoring for the money, maybe we have to lower the percentage in order to allow for that. But at this point, I don't see any reason for changing. I would certainly support it. I applaud that you're doing a great job with the restaurant, and a lot of people seem to like go there, and you actually wanna change the, the look and feel of the outside to draw more people in, right? So, I think that's what we've all been talking about, is improving downtown. It's another, another step in that direction, from my point of view. So, I would support it.
It's Jack's Basin.
Sorry?
The Basin. You guys call it the Basin now.
We're, we're trying now to move into the
Central Plaza.
Down, what is it, down?
Central Plaza.
Listen, you better not tell Vic, because that's the basin.
Did you say the Plaza?
Central Plaza, all right, so.
Payson Plaza, come on.
All right, so if anybody doesn't, does anybody have any more questions? The two awnings in front and the sign on the left side of the building, right? That's it?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any more questions for Alma or Jack? Alma's gotta get back to work, so we might as well vote. All who's in favor? All right, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Let's get a nice color picture, Jack, of what we're on the website.
We, we assume that the board can visualize the color. The only thing, it says color red.
Good night.
How are trying to get right to action?
Well, the next one is the request of a vote of support to submit statement of interest. This is the, this is the same one that's in the grant, right?
Yeah.
We talked about this two meetings ago, didn't we? We talked about it at the budget meeting.
At a high-low, oh, yeah.
I know, we talked about it once already. So, the motion is that we move to support the submission of a statement of interest for the MSBA core program for the Green Meadow School, and, zoom a second.
Seconds.
Thank you. And now it says the DPW Director will attend to provide information.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So, this is just that, it's basically the board authorizing the superintendent to submit to the MSBA statement of interest form for this season's round of core program. Last year, the board's supported submission of a statement of interest for the core, excuse me, the Accelerator Program, focusing on the roof replacement of the building. The core program expands that scope to do a feasibility study of the entire building, and then determine the best course of action for moving forward for the school district and the school building as a whole. The date of submission would be April sixth, is when the application is due. Then after discussions with Dr. Gerardi and some members of the school committee, and the MSBA themselves, make the best move moving forward for the, for the school district and the building is to, is to apply for the core program. It opens a window, as we've identified more long-term issues than just a, a roof replacement of the building. And if we were to move forward just to the Accelerator Repair Program and to apply just for the roof, we're otherwise stating that the, the building is whole and sound, outside of the scope of the roof, when in reality, we've identified other issues, and we've had those discussions about at some point, possibly either renovating, replacing, or major construction to the building. The building was built originally nineteen fifty-five, with additions in nineteen seventy-four and nineteen eighty-eight, and it's in need of repair. We've been able to maintain and keep it, keep it open as a safe public school building, but I think there's some interest in pursuing what other options are out there, and getting some assistance from MSBA for that feasibility study, and some direction for moving forward. This is not committing the town to any funds, or this is just an authorization allowing the superintendent, and to allow me to submit a statement of interest to the school district. The school committee already voted and signed a similar statement, I think, maybe two weeks ago, that I attended, and so, the statement of interest requires a vote of, of, of support from the local governing body, and also the school committee.
So, Aaron, essentially, you're applying, you see funding to do the feasibility study. Is that what you're doing?
So, it's, it's two of them. So, it's, you're applying for the feasibility study and the funding. So, MSBA would be the body doing the feasibility study. And then from the feasibility study, from those findings, they list out some options of how to move forward.
On how to remediate problems?
But there's no guarantee for dollars associated to fund what they find and recommend, correct?
There's no guarantee that we would receive this grant. It's a very low percentage, it's like, between ten to twenty percent in a way that are approved to move forward, of those that submit the SOI.
And so that means that we're in, going this path of requesting the core program for the feasibility study, we're stepping away from an application for the Accelerator Program for the roof project specifically? Is that correct?
Correct. So, last year, I submitted an application for the Accelerator Repair Program for specifically the roof, and this year, we're gonna state the roof, but also the other needs of the building as a whole.
Okay, so we'll state the, the roof as a justification for why we wanna be in the core program.
Yeah, and there's, there's other items, too.
Yeah, but if we had got, I guess what I'm just trying to understand is that, so, I mean, it's like, you know, there's funding for a study versus funding for actual projects that fix problems that we know that we have. So, it's, I mean, I, I get the value of the feasibility study, it just leaves me-
The first step in the core program is a feasibility study, you can't get around it. So, even if you needed an entire new building, they'd still send somebody out from the state to determine that, and then you work together on the, working with the school district and available funding, and what the best fit for the town would be to move forward, whether you do some type of renovation, or build a new school, or replace the school.
If I missed this, Aaron, I apologize. Is this a one-hundred percent grant, or what's, what's the town's commitment? Should we be the ten percent and win the, the award? What's the town's commitment?
It'd be a similar percentage to what it was with the high school. I think at that time, it was sixty-four.
Do you have any idea what the magnitude of that might be, as far as money?
I believe it was sixty-fourty.
Yeah, I know that, but-
It, it depends on what, what the end, end result is. They might come in and say, you only need construction, you know, an addition, or renovation, or a new building. So, it depends on what the scope of the project would be.
But they paid, I guess the question is, they pay for the study one-hundred percent?
The study is what I'm concerned about.
I think, so, so what I was told by MSBA is that they would determine what, how big of a study would be, what the cost it would be, and then present that to the town and the school, school committee, and to be discussion back and forth.
But the study itself, is it on the state?
It's not all on the state, no.
It's not all on the state. But we don't know what we're committing ourselves to.
We're not committing to anything. So, this is just allowing me to submit a statement of interest to let the MSBA know that we're interested in possibly having a feasibility study done, because we have known needs of the building. It's the first step in the process. Then the next step would be, if, if they approve us, they'd come out, have some discussions, look at the building, we'll do a walk-around, which would, wouldn't be a charge, and then determine how large of a real feasibility study that they need to do.
So, we could then conceivably, if they come back and say, it's a billion dollars, then you have to pay half of that.
Yeah.
We could courteously say, thank you, but no thank you, please feel free to send that award to another.
Right, or step back and scale it down, too. It's, it's, those are the long process. It's a, it's a multi-year process, and this is basically just putting our name on a list, right? There's other towns that have been putting, submitting SOIs for years, saying that they need a new building, and have, haven't been accepted in the program. So, you know, we haven't put a SOI for the entire core program. We did one year of an Accelerator Repair, and that was it, so.
Is there a perception that, kind of, in the ranking of the committee itself, that the number of times you've gone in to ask positively or reflect on who wins awards at the end, or is there no- positively reflects on who wins awards at the end, or is there no kind of way to understand how they make their decisions?
Yeah, I think they look at the needs of a community as a whole, how many school buildings you have, you know, what are the age of the other buildings, there's, it's a... And they also look at what the curriculum is, it's not just, this is the needs of the building, they're gonna ask questions that are that, you know, Dr. Gerardi and his staff are gonna need to supply information, enrollment, future enrollment, projections, the, you know, their curriculum, it's a whole... It's a whole, it's a look at the entire district as a whole, not just the building itself, so, they're looking at a wide range of things.
And as you're looking at it from sort of putting solely the hat on of kind of capital planning and dollars and needs across the plethora of infrastructure that falls under your department, is it kind of your feeling that this is the better direction to be going in for this project as opposed to the accelerator program for the roof specifically?
I do, yeah, 'cause I mean, there's been feedback, and you know, it's the conversation I had with some of the school department, our school, excuse me, school committee members on, you know, what does the school committee feel is the level of of education and the quality of ability that they want to provide as part of their curriculum as well, and that's something that they would have to determine, you know, working with MSBA and what the long-term plan's gonna be. You know, there's been discussion of new buildings, fire station, you know, I think in Green Meadow School, DPW Garage, they were listed on the joint budget committee, you know, the long-term vision of the town, so this is just the first step in that long process, so...
Anybody have any other questions for Erin about these that are interesting?
Any comments from the school committee?
I'd like to say that I sat down with Erin to really understand sort of Green Meadow and how its three buildings made in three different eras. And this is what I think sort of part of what it was for me, is understanding, I know a number of you may remember, they originally had set aside money for the roof, and far before Erin's time, we never put the money into the roof, it rolled back into free cash, so there's sort of some known issues with the roof. And then, in terms of looking at the capital plan, I know that Erin, what I understand is Erin's trying to understand how this can fit into our overall capital plan, so is there an opportunity to look for the state to kick in some money on some project? I think Erin's doing a good job getting those answers for us, the answer may not be what we want to do, and we can look her up, you know, but I think he's getting all of us enough information to make educated decisions. But I don't think anyone on the school committee, other than knowing that one wing of the building is extremely old and leaky. You know, we look to Erin, you know, as a partnership, we can tell them what we think, but, I mean, I think the school committee, I can say hands down, is looking at the town as a whole with all of the things on the capital plan, so, you know, we're not talking about any building, we're saying, what do we need to do? What can we get by with, and what else is going on, you know, Erin can get into the detail, and I'm sure you all have the capital plan copy, there's bathroom renovations, there's this, there's that, what can we do and get by with, versus I don't think anyone here wants to start another new high school project right now, but we'd like to know, I think, and Andrew's been great at this, where is that on our plan, is it 10 years out, is it five years out? You know, I think if the state came back and said, we need a new building in a year, that's, thank you, we'll all have to have some really hard discussions, but we're hoping it's less than that, and I appreciate Erin going through all the hoops of finding out all the different avenues, so I think that's where we're at right now, and we're all sort of waiting and seeing and what our options are gonna be.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, all of us in favor? Thanks.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure. Next, we'll skip the school committee budget discussion until the next meeting, but there are...
Good one, good one.
Alright.
At least your graphs are...
So, this is nice to Michelle, we just love Michelle. Thank you.
Michelle, do you have Jack's email?
It's not prey on you, not shame on you.
So, we just wanted to take the opportunity to kind of continue the conversation that happened at the joint meeting that we had in February, and also just initially, I just want to say that it's, I think Mary and I can both say that it's been a really good year as far as the budget subcommittee meetings that we've had with David and Cheryl, and then the finance committee, and then us, we've had some really good productive discussions that I think helped us all understand the whole town, as John just said. So I wanted to start with a quote that came out of the budget report, the here, this great report that we all got on that Saturday. And this was under the education portion, it said, "Our objective is a commitment to high academic standards that encourage students, teachers, and community members to achieve their personal best through lifelong learning, the community continues to view education as a vital part of our municipal services," so, we really appreciate that, it shows the commitment that the town has to education and that. And also, there was an initial statement in that same booklet, the first page, I think, from Kevin, it said, "This year I anticipate that we'll have a lean budget that funds most departments at their current staffing levels and allows them to continue to produce excellent public services for the town's residents." So, we had originally requested 7.29% over this year's budget, thanks to an awful lot of hard work by Michelle Rosendus, our manager, business manager, because it actually started off higher than that, but as a result of her expertise and really fine-tuning her pencil, and actually maybe putting us at a disadvantage for next year because basically we're using most of our reserves. So if we have an unforeseen situation, as in a new special ed student come in, anytime between now and June 30th of 2019, we're gonna be in deep trouble. But she, you know, in an effort to really fine-tune our budget and make it as efficient as possible, as financially, fiscally responsible as possible, we did that, and that's where we came to 7.29%. As you all know, we were presented with a 5.14% budget at that February meeting, which results in a loss of $374,000 in cuts to staff and programs that we're gonna be looking at next year. So we are here just requesting that if there's any possible way that there's any additional funding, that you would look at us seriously, because we're really... It puts us in a dire situation, needless to say, the chat that Michelle so diligently put together really shows, I think it really encapsulates everything that's been going on since 2013. It shows the aggregate of cuts, and it's done on a by-year basis, so she even used different colors, which is really great. Anyway, long story short, is we are looking, if we had received level service from 2013 to 2019, the budget that we're looking at, we're looking at the aggregate of $2.3 million in loss for our services to our children. And that's just keeping things level, and that's not even doing that, well, yeah, if we had had it, we'd actually be in such a better spot because we've had to make so many cuts that we would, we'd have a much stronger, stronger school department as a result of it, so...
Can I jump in first?
Sure, absolutely.
You know, we usually get to meetings later in the spring where we find out what the cut, you know, how much money are we actually going to have to cut, and by that point, you know, people have been notified that their jobs are on the line or potential cuts, they start to look out of district because they're uncertain about what's gonna happen at town meeting, whether we're gonna get the money that we need, and so we're hoping by coming earlier, anything that we we cannot share what those things would be, but it would be a reduction to staff and to services, and, you know, having been on school committee the past couple of years when we've made these hard decisions and seen the things we caught already, all I can say is that they will hurt, they will really hurt the community and hurt the kids, and it will further put us, you know, I want to say in the red, but in the yellow on this chart. And, you know, I think there was mentioning at one point about health insurance, and that our health insurance that we were negotiating rates for might come in lower than we'd anticipated, and I don't know how that has turned out, and if there are any additional funds to be found there. But we really are just coming with a plea to please, you know, help to offset that gap. We also were a little surprised just at the joint meeting in February, because we thought we were gonna come a little bit closer to the ask, but when you look at this, it's, you know, almost as much as we had to cut last year, so even though we had these great conversations, we just still felt a little bit just sad, sad for our kids.
We had heard, and it was in direct conversation, but I think I could even say that there's a number of people in this room that were surprised that we didn't come closer to the 7.29%, and it is, you know, it's a much bigger nut than the other departments, we represent, obviously, a much bigger budget, but but yeah, it was definitely quite staggering, I think, to all of us at that meeting. And, you know, and I'm gonna just reiterate some of the things that Mary mentioned so well at the joint hearing, the fact that Maynard has fallen below the state per pupil cost since 2014, and the span is actually growing, so, for instance, in 2016, the per pupil state cost was $15,545 per student versus Maynard $14,889. Now, it, you know, it doesn't sound like a lot, but you multiply that by 1,400 kids and it's $918,000. So that's where we are, and that's 2016, that's not even 2017. There's a direct correlation between decrease in level service funding from FY13 through FY18, and that and an increase in students opting to attend a charter school, so, with the decreases that we've had, it definitely is sending more students to the charter school. Maynard school dollars travel to the receiving charter school, you all know that, based on a per pupil cost, and with us, it's $14,889 times 54 students now, and so that represents 804,000, we're reimbursed by the state 100,000 the first year, but then that dissipates over the next couple of years to the point that we're 100% responsible for sending, sending that basically $15,000 per student. By taking that money, it, to me, it seems simple, I'm not, I guess I'm not that bright, but I just, I see, and I used to say this about the new high school, one way or another, the money's gonna be spent, and by taking that money and investing it in Maynard schools, instead of sending that money to another school to help them be stronger? I said that about, you know, the Community Preservation Act that we've got, you know, we're paying money, but the money's not coming back to benefit us as a town, and more importantly, the students, so, by making that investment in our students, we're gonna keep the students, and we're also going to keep ours, make our schools that much stronger, so... And in spite of all of the, you know, the decreases that we're talking about and that, we have the most amazing, dedicated staff, and just even, you know, the office and that, I'm gonna give you some examples, the teacher's contract has been agreed to, and it was great collaboration between the staff and between the union and the schools. Leading the Nation, Dr. Gerardi can talk about that some more, but that's, it's a pretty cool example of something that we, Maynard was chosen as one of the first towns to participate in because Massachusetts is number one in the country, so there's a lot of great stuff going on there, we've got the Spanish immersion program that continues to bring people in town, our technology and computer science programs are great, senior project, the seniors are phenomenal in what they do there, it's now a requirement. Nearly half of our juniors are eligible for the Coplik or Adams State Scholarships, it used to be called the John Adams and the Abigail Adams, but I guess they changed it based on their MCAS score, so as a result of it, when they go to apply, when they, if they go to a state school, actually their tuition gets waived, so, so that's a really, really great thing too. A larger percentage of our juniors have been recommended for honors classes next year, because their performance has gone up at an exceptional rate. We've got the Chapter 74 WAVM Pathway Program in place up at the high school, thanks to Jen Gardett, we've got the investment in the social emotional program that we've talked about before, the High School Global Learning Initiative, Dawn and Beth, Beth Lynn spearheaded a roundtable discussion with parents to give them an opportunity to cite concerns that they had with the schools and that, and there's already been some great, great things going on to address those. Myself, Mary Murch, Justine St. John, met with state rep Kate Hogan a few weeks back to really talk to her, that speaks to you too, because I know, Terrence, you had mentioned that. It's, some of what we've got, that we're dealing with is bigger than Maynard, and so we sat down with her, spent some really good time with her, and really educated her on the special circumstances that Maynard has, being a small town and that, so...
And I could jump in there too, I mean, two of the things we talked about with Kate, because I know you've asked about, in terms of statewide, how we fund education, what are we doing to try to change the way that we do it? But two of the things we talked about were transportation monopolies in the state, and also special education tuition, so for our out-of-district placements, we were asking about oversight for those schools because we've gotten letters in the mail, you know, that Michelle has shown us where the tuition for one child increased by 100%, you know, in one year, and so we asked a lot of good questions about that, and she's doing what she can to try to help us and ask about our needs, but...
Yeah, so, as, you know, Mary just said, you know, anything less than that 7.29%, we're talking about a loss of programs, reduction in teaching staff, support staff, student services, and possibly a reduction in extracurricular athletic programs. I thought it was kind of poignant, the, when we did that thing that Michelle put together, what was that?
Funding, yes.
Thank you, we had, Mary and I had Kyle Morgan as our National Honor Society student, and we asked him what he thought of the schools and that, and he's had a great, great, great experience, and we asked him if there was any place that he, you know, that he wished things had been better, he actually talked about the guidance staff up at the high school, and the fact, that's been one of the things we've had to cut, and he said, just the lack of the guidance department that we used to have, it really... Kids have a lot of different issues, you know, you help, the guidance staff is, yeah, they're helping the kids, you know, apply to colleges and stuff like that, but there's so many things that happen to the kids that they could really use that staff, that the staff is really stretched to the limit.
And just to clarify too, that he wasn't in any way putting down the guidance staff, but it was more about numbers and ratio of students.
Oh, no, 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 the guidance staff was phenomenal, it's just they weren't enough of them, you know, it's just not, to make it sound like that, sorry, no, 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 he had nothing but accolades to say about them. One of the other things that I wanted to point out, one of the long-term impacts of, again, not getting level service funding, is that we're gonna be looking in four years at having another NEASC review to accredit the high school. We all know what happened the last time, it resulted in the new high school, but one of the things that they definitely do look at is the curriculum, you know, they look at the building, but they also look at the the curriculum that's being offered, so each time that we're making cuts, obviously, we have to make cuts at the high school too, so, you know, it's definitely gonna have an impact on us there too, so all of this, these unintended consequences really gonna have a, you know, continue to have a long-term impact, so...
Mary, quick question.
Sure.
Specific to your last comment, what do cuts have to do with curriculum in NEASC, because of that, I'm eager to that factor.
That's okay, no, absolutely, so, one of the things that we've had to do is, when the kids get up to high school, they have the opportunities to take different electives and that, and different honors, different levels of classes and that, and so if we have to cut back those options, like if we have eight advanced placement subject matters, for instance, and now we have to make cuts, well, we might have to go back to six, or to five, or four advanced placements cuts, so so what the, one of the things that NEASC is looking at is breadth of options for the students, now, we're limited because we're small, you know, we've got fewer kids, but but we were actually commended according to what the principal said, what Chuck had said the last time, was we were commended on the breadth of options that the kids had. So we, those, that's where the cuts come in, you have to be more lean and offer the basics, but not be able to provide the kids with the extras.
Say you cut like a Spanish 5 or something like that, but you have students who are wanting to take it and would have taken it, would have been able to take it, but it's just not part of our offering, it's that type of thing that they're looking at? Any other questions?
Yeah, I would just add, you know, as we talked about, I think it was in our January 11th meeting of the subcommittee where we first started looking at the, I think one of our colleagues referred to it as the snaggletooth graph, which you brought, and it, you know, does, it's, I think, probably among all the different data points, sort of the most compelling viewpoint of impacts over time, so, I know we've had the chance as a board to see this in a couple of different ways, but putting it forward again. You know, it's the great challenge, we've known since the beginning of the year that we were gonna have a significant gap between what all town departments were asking for and what we had the revenue to deliver, and we'll continue to do what we can. Andrew, to the question, do we get, we haven't, have we gotten word yet on the health insurance?
We have...
I know it's one, just one piece of all this stuff that we're waiting to come in still.
Yeah, we have received a number, I'm meeting with the finance director tomorrow to calculate out how that filters into the budget, and then make recommendations on what might be available.
Perfect, then of course Erin's planning another snowstorm tomorrow.
I love seeing that budget for ice and salt.
I love seeing that budget for ice and salt.
Are we playing the number tonight?
Well, we greatly appreciate your support and what will happen. We greatly appreciate that for the kids. Were you going to say something, Chris? Sorry?
No.
He was, but then he thought better of it.
No, no. I am personally surprised, and anyone was surprised at the difference between the two numbers, given all of the discussions that we had in this room. Now, I don't know where those discussions went, in small subcommittee meetings, or when, you know, discussing between Bob and Michelle and Kevin and Andrew and those people that spoke at that level. But I wasn't surprised at this number. I'm not happy about this number, but I certainly wouldn't say I was surprised by this number. You know, since we finished our town meeting last year, or special town meeting, was it town meeting made the changes, a town meeting? Since we finished last year, I mean, you know, my overriding thought was, you know, we found some money last year, and where will we find it this year if we can? And it's, there isn't a readily available answer like we kind of forced last year. So it's kind of a different type of search. And it was easier, you know, last year's change to the budget at the last minute was kind of, you know, from a lot of standpoints, a much easier sell for people because it was a specific item that came late in the day, and we could say, look, this one particular item threw everything out of whack in the schools. We need to fix that problem. And this is a little, this is a little different this year, that we don't have that one particular item that comes up. And it's, you know, you guys all know what the questions will be from some, and, you know, others won't have the questions, but it'll be, you know, well, what are you doing with it? Why not this, why not that? And they'll try and pick apart everything you do. And that's not what I'm here to do, ever. I don't want to get involved in that part of it. But, you know, where do we find that money is just the difficult piece. I've talked to Kate, I mean, I talked to Kate way more than, she probably wants me to about these things, and, you know, the foundation budgets. And I talked to, you know, I tried to talk to Jamie about it a little bit, but he was running off the door, so I, you know, just kind of put that bug in his ear. But that's really that, you know, we've talked about that now for a couple of years, and Kate understands that. And the governor actually understands the foundation budget piece. You know, maybe he ends up helping. I mean, he's kind of helped in some areas in the past since he's been there, but.
One of the things that Kate said, which, you know, I hope she'll pursue, you know, at the state level, but is, in thinking about the difference between school finance and a small system like Maynard compared to a regional district, and how those things might look different. And so as they look at Chapter 70 funding, and, you know, might it look different depending on whether you're regionalized or not? Because that definitely, I think, is a challenge we face. I did want to say, though, as we're asking for more money, should we get more money? We would love for it to be part of our operating budget, instead of what happened last year, where then we, you know, begin the year. I mean, not that we didn't appreciate that money, it helped us out for sure. It's just that then we start again, you know, with a deficit.
And that's the problem. The problem is, when it wasn't the operating budget, it was an extraordinary thing. And now, you know, people are going to say, well, it's not so extraordinary. It's just, you know, they're going to, the naysayers are going to say the same thing they tell us every time, that they don't like something that we do. They're going to say, oh, you're not doing a good enough job with the money we give you. And I don't think that anyone in this room in general believes that statement to be true, but I think that that's the attitude of some, and that's, you know, it's not the right attitude. And certainly, when you start looking at those things, I mean, you know, we can only tax to a certain level, we can only do certain things to a certain amount, we can only collect a certain amount, but as, you know, contracts continue to grow at a certain rate, insurance goes at a certain rate, all these things are outpacing our ability to collect money. And that's the problem. And that's, so that's who we are. Part of the meetings with, you know, with you guys, the school committee, and the FinCom, and those of us from the selectmen that attend with, together in those larger meetings, that's, you know, I don't really see. A quick answer, yeah, there's going to be, at some point, there, hopefully, there will be some increased revenues on different projects that are proposed around town, and the mill, you know, at some point, when they're done, their value should rise, and their taxability should rise based on what they're doing with it. That project is much slower than originally anticipated. You know, the 120 Parker Street, I'm not spending that money yet. We talked about that every time, and, you know, there's people that we're going to start seeing that next year. Well, it's not going to be next year, they haven't put a shovel in the ground yet. They haven't, you know, they haven't assessed a piece of that property yet. So we have all those things to wait for, but in the meantime, we're still, our expenses are outpacing our revenue, and that's bueno, you know, in business or in town government. So certainly, we'll look, and if anything, you know, anything pops up that we're able to offer the schools or share with the schools, and we certainly will continue to do that, but I don't know where it's going to come from this year, because, you know, those items that we kind of robbed from last year to pay are, were, you know, lessened again this year to begin with. So there's less money there to take from them, even if we went that route. But we will do our best. And you guys have an article for the town meeting, a special town meeting that you proposed? They sent in an article?
Yeah, that's for the special education.
But that's for the regular town meeting or the special?
I believe it's going to be on the special, but not until May, not that it marks.
The mini-special. The regular special, not the special special. I mean, that should help, you know, those type of things.
So with that, just to give you a heads up with that, so that has to be voted on by the town. That's establishing the fund, and then giving us the ability to fund the fund if there are any remaining funds from this year. Then you'll actually have to vote again to expend those funds, which means appropriate them to the 2020 budget.
It's okay, Michelle, I'll find a way to make your life difficult, too.
I'm waiting.
But it's, no, and those things are, I mean, those separate things are great. I mean, you know, one of the great things we have in this town right now is we have people in this building that are doing great work. Adam, I mean, Aaron, you know, Bill Nemser, Andrew, and everybody else chasing grants, like Maynard's never done before. And by the way, we continue to receive certain grants. So every time we receive a grant, it's something that can go towards, you know, something else. So we continue, everyone in town understands the issues. The town, hall staff, and everybody on board is continuing to chase these grants in places where Maynard may not have been chasing them before. And as they come to fruition, we continue to enjoy the benefits. And, you know, there's nobody in the room that doesn't think the schools, you know, deserve or need the money. It's just a matter of getting it to you guys without affecting other departments as well. So we'll continue to fight and, you know, see where we go. And I'm sure that, you know, when we get closer and there's some discussion about cuts, there'll be more things, and go to more meetings and talk about it with people that are actually affecting their lives and livelihoods, and, you know. It doesn't change it, but, you know, for some people, it adds a little bit of gravity to it.
I may have one comment on top of the, talk about grants and how we've done a really good job of trying to find money wherever we can. We have done a really good job with that. I think it's incumbent upon all of us as residents, especially taxpayers, and we don't like to pay bills, we don't like to pay tax increases. We need to look at the town and realize that the town landscape has to change over the next couple of years to survive. It's a new world out there. And we can't keep saying no to projects in people's neighborhoods because they're unhappy that their neighborhood's going to be impacted. Everyone's neighborhood is impacted. Doesn't matter where you live. But in order to have progress, you may have to do things differently than we've done in the past. And that means accepting projects that come into the town that people have the right to build on, and start to build some, you know, some groundswell behind that, and understand that for the long-term health and well-being of the town, new revenue sources have to be discovered. We have a lot of them. So being provincial, and being nimbyism, and holding on to your beliefs that your small neighborhood can't be impacted, the whole town is being impacted right now. I think you can see this, this strain on all five members of this board. I can tell you the odds that we go through, having to deal with the school budget alone, every other budget that we have to deal with. And it's not, it's not pleasant, and it's not pleasant as a resident to get your tax bill either. So if we can't find ways to increase the revenue here, we're going to be in even more trouble next year. We're going to have this conversation again next year. Well, I'm not going to have it. Somebody else is going to have this conversation next year, but I'll be in the back as a resident talking to you about it. So if we don't change, we're going to continue to have this meeting every single year. We need to find new revenue. We can't depend on what was coming in before, because it's getting smaller and the bills are getting larger. So that's my soapbox, and I really, I'm pleading with you, change the way you think about what this town really looks like, because we need new access to funds.
I would just ask, like, as a last, last request, that as you all are looking at whether it's health insurance, or if any additional funds become available for, on our end, to sort of avoid the, both, you know, families who start looking out at charter schools because they hear about the difficult cuts we're making, and also to save our staff from going out there and looking for jobs and deciding to leave, because you know what? Maynard just doesn't look like a very stable place to be a teacher. I would just ask that the sooner, the sooner that we could get additional money, the better, so that that doesn't, I really, I really feel like the nature of those meetings and the impact, the negative impact that they have on the schools, I think, is not to be underestimated.
I just want to say, I know that, to your point, Terrence, like, these are going to be, continue to be different conversations, and I really appreciate everyone having. Like, this is not fun for anyone. Like, I mean, but the fact that we continue to do it, I know that continuing into next year, like, once we're done with whatever happens with this year, I appreciate all that we've done, talked about so far, just this year alone, and all the work everyone's put in, and I know that people feel it. I get that everyone understands the gravity of the situation all around. Like, I want to see things funded on the town, too, not just in the school. But I, for us to continue to talk and try to look at the longer-range plan, and what does it look like, so that we can then do more of the education piece around, look, if we want these things, and these are our priorities, and these are the things we need to do in the town over the next five years, this will be some of the things we need to decide, and the decision points in order for that to happen. These are the, and so we are working together with the town, having that discussion that can help the larger town to understand that context. And I think, I always like to take a breather after we're kind of getting set with some of the budget stuff, but then, if we can get right back in there, I think the better we can do to just keep going with some of the conversation and working some of that through, we're going to be better off in trying to stay on top of the, the understanding and being able to then move the town forward with us.
All right, one comment I'd make, completely away from the budget, really, but it's something that I appreciate, and I know, we talked about it, the budget subcommittee level going on, and I've seen that, I think, people take it into heart, that we need to celebrate our successes more and make it known about our successes. And I've seen the effort that the school committee has made, but I think that we could do even more and better. Mary highlighted some of the things that specifically, you know, and I saw it in Chuck's email this week, junior class issues. I'm proud of my junior, who's part of the group, and, you know, that they, that type of thing that shows that the Maynard Public Schools do a damn good job with, even with struggles that we face. And there's so many things that we can point at. You've mentioned Kyle Morgan, and Kyle Morgan is one of many seniors who are just, I mean, when you meet these kids and speak with them and see how they've grown as people, and the education that they've gotten from the Maynard School Department is, you know, outstanding. You see the schools that these kids are going to and that they're getting accepted at, that they're even taking chances at applying to. It's really this type of stuff that we need to celebrate and make known that, hey, it's not, it's not just Maynard. This is, Maynard has a pretty damn good school system that has a lot of successes to celebrate.
I want to build on what you said, and Mary had mentioned the Leading the Nation campaign. But the Department of Ed, Massachusetts Department of Ed, is very proud that for the last three years, Massachusetts has scored number one in very important categories, even on international tests. And so they started Leading the Nation campaign, and they look for innovative schools. So a lot of the times when I've come, I've talked about, a lot of our innovative programs are low cost or no cost. That's why we can juggle those things and, you know, through reallocating resources. So we are doing some pretty amazing things, and they searched us out as one of the innovative districts. So we are going to have a website that's coming up called, it's www.leadinthenationmaynard.k12.us. We'll be sending that out. But for the Board of Selectmen and for the officials, we will be sending you invitations, because on May 11th, we have our senior project, where we're going, the Maynard Education Foundation gave us a grant to fund a luncheon, so we're going to invite you to a luncheon, and we're going to really publicize this in the community, and the state's publicizing for us as well. So we're building on the state and getting their publicizing of how good Maynard schools are, so we are trying. We have a lot of things in the works, but expect an interview, an invitation to the May 11 senior project luncheon.
I just wanted to just quickly say, you know, I do get the feeling, you know, this year and last year especially, that you guys have a lot more faith in the school side. Like, I think we've definitely gotten a lot closer in terms of working together. But the committee that Beth Lynn and I are just starting with, sort of trying to, you know, we see the choice outnumber's go up and down, and David, I know you remember some of the meetings where we had the challenge of choice and the agenda, you know, all those crazy meetings that we've had in the past. But a lot of the things we heard from the parents were things that we've heard before, but they're not getting the information of where the improvements are being made, so I think you make a great point. And one of the reasons Beth Lynn and I are really jumping into this is just, you run out of time. I mean, Andrew doesn't have enough time to do what he needs to do, you know, just, so what we're doing is sort of taking it from there. And our new technology person, our old technology person retired, the new one, Bob, can not only connect all the wires and keep everything up and running, but also is social media savvy. So he's got a way, this, the new tech person, to give all the teaser to administrators, and he's going to hopefully get it done this summer. Ways to just get the positive word out. Like, anyone who follows Mark Sinopoli on Twitter, he's amazing. Our principals are getting better at it, but we don't have parents on Twitter, so we've got to get it over to the Facebook still. But I think we've heard a lot of those things, and I feel like we're all attacking it from all different sides, you guys included. So I just want to say, it just seems like it's a better tenor, or whatever it is. But we just really appreciate it. It's just, we're in a better place. These conversations are horrendous. We go through it every year, and then we always forget to talk about the good things of this time of year. And there really are a lot of great things. So I'll be happy to share some of those emails that Beth Lynn and I have put together to maybe help you folks have a little more transparency as to actually what we are doing with the funds. So I think it's been helping the parents as well, so. So just throwing that out there, there we are. And I've got a meeting scheduled with Senator Eldridge. He knows about our concerns with the charter schools and some of the things that have been happening there. I think we've talked about it at the budget meeting. It seems like now, schools are actually competing for students. And maybe I'm naive and this happened 10 years ago, but it's much more intense now. So we almost feel like people are targeting our students as well. And when you're a small district already, you just don't have that pool of students to give. So I'll be meeting with Jamie, so that'll be an interesting meeting. And we're trying to manage up. You know, I think Terrence said at a previous meeting, we're trying to get Kate up to speed. She does a great job for us, but we have to engage her, too. So we're trying to engage Kate and Jamie, and legislative day at Hill is coming up, and I'm going to try to go to that. And I think you see lots of school committees just pushing and pushing to get that foundation level budget. So I know it's stuff we keep talking about, but just so you know, we're hearing you and definitely trying to do our part, too, so we appreciate that.
And just as a reference, both Jamie and Kate were recently here before the Board of Selectmen, doing their kind of annual presentation, and referenced the meetings and the efforts.
And they were both with a taste, and you.
Did they pay?
You weren't there, so do not.
I was sick.
Oh, you were sick. Yes, you're going on a golf tour.
Yeah, that's right.
I will say, if you get on Twitter, you find out that people's delay is earlier than you think, so you find out like an hour earlier. Just to let you know, because that is bonus.
Yeah. So the item nine on the agenda has to do with the Bancroft property, which is commonly known as the Coolidge School. About three years ago, the town convened a task force to determine future use of the property. The task force submitted a report, which was attached to the agenda, that essentially said that the town had no specific immediate use for the property and would consider, should consider selling it. uh, should consider selling it. The Selectmen at that time took no immediate action. Uh, a few months ago, it came up as a conversation, uh, in this room and, um, I added it to the agenda this week to see if the board wanted to move forward with the sale process, which takes about a year and requires a town meeting vote. So I put it on the agenda now so that if you are interested in that, we would have time to put together a warrant article, uh, so it would be on the May town meeting.
Is anything going on in Coolidge now? The food pantry is moving out of it and into new space?
Specifically, uh, no, uh, but I met today with the Boys and Girls Club on other matters and they expressed interest in having access to the building, uh, in case they get rainstorms. They use the park in the summertime for camps and also for restrooms. They, uh, rent porta potties now. So it, you know, there's no immediate yes to that because it's a complicated answer, but, uh, there, there would be interest in using it for some purposes like that.
If we were to sell the property, would that include the playground, like yard space or would be specifically the building and just like the immediate footprint around it?
Excellent question. Um, so three years ago, after the task force recommendations, the town put some money into patching their roof because there was some damage coming. And also, uh, we paid for the survey work to, um, carve out, um, the building and the parking area from the rest of the park so that the, if we sold it, the town would still control the park, uh, and whoever bought it would have, uh, it's roughly three quarters of an acre. So that work's already been done, needs to go to planning board for, uh, consistency for the A and R, but essentially it's, it's ready to go.
I saw in the proposal that it's zoned as multifamily use residential, so if we put it out for bid for projects, would be the cool to convert it to a multifamily use only or would it be open for people to submit proposals for anything else, including zoning changes?
So that's the nice part for this. The town controls the sale, so we could write an RFP, uh, that asks for all sorts of different uses, um, and then choose the one that is, uh, in our best interest. And that may be the one that creates the most tax revenue or that uses it for a terrific public purpose. Um, you know, there's all sorts of different ways it could get repurposed that we may not have thought of, but some creative developer would. Um, but we can structure the RFP so it doesn't have to be the person who offers us the most money, but for the purpose that the town wants the most.
I think, uh, one important point to make is, um, although the committee sort of, and they were a great team of people that were working on that, um, when they came up with their conclusions, they had a wide variety of different solutions or options or whatever, but the one specific theme that was strongest of all, I think, uh, at the end of the day was that there was a clear desire to maintain that structure, to maintain the facade so that we don't lose to history the, you know, up in, you know, the magnificence of the building. It's a, it's a unique building and it is, uh, so, and we have through the RFP process the opportunity to, um, ask the people to repurpose it with the understanding that it will remain, the facade would remain the same. I think that's important, given the fact that, you know, the committee put so much effort into that and that was a, I, I think, an overwhelming theme of, of the end result, that the uniqueness of that and the uniqueness of it to Maynard and the fact that if you tear it down, it's gone forever.
So if I'm, if I may, I had the chance to sit down, gosh, was it a couple of months ago now, Andrew, um, with Andrew Bell, just because I had a couple of, of questions around town, one of which, um, related to Coolidge and sort of under the category of, um, touching on, I think it was Terrence's point earlier, um, you know, we need as, we need as many performing assets in the town as we can. We have Coolidge that's essentially sitting there, um, not costing us much, but something that's constantly on the list of repairs and management and the potential to cost us more just to keep it maintained. So part of what we were kind of talking through was, you know, if we start this process because it is such a lengthy one and within the RFP process, kind of keeping it open-ended, um, from an RFP to see what comes back, stating like a strong preference for an integration of elements of the existing building or facade, et cetera, but doing it in such a way that, um, you're not necessarily constraining somebody to only use the existing footprint as it sits, because that might end up constraining you to a point that you don't actually have a financially viable project. So how could we craft something that sort of states, these are the town's preferences, these are things that we are interested in, and now we're open to proposals that come back, which then through that might, because none of us are developers, um, open us to things that we might not kind of imagine as the possible.
It's a great way of expressing it. The reuse committee suggested that the front facade of the building be protected, preserved for the reasons Selectmen Gavin suggested, but also suggested that the building could be cantilevered in the rear to expand the size of it, uh, essentially putting real estate out over the top of the park and that might create that viability. We estimate somewhere, uh, around $30,000 would be the, um, potential tax revenue, uh, if it were, uh, turned into apartments or condominiums.
To Terrence's earlier point, I mean, we're in a huge, um, revenue crisis in this town, so I think any opportunity we have to seize an opportunity, we should take on. I mean, that's my take on it. And given that we have such control over the process to address the conservation efforts and anything else we want to do, it seems like it would be a missed opportunity if we didn't, you know, at least start the process now and see what comes in in terms of RFPs.
I would certainly say that me, Aker and Jack were on the committee. They did a lot of work on this and I'm not disputing that at all, but I would draw the line at overwhelming. There was 50 residents approximately that, that went to the forum. I know a lot of us had other committees, we couldn't be there, so I think three years is a long time for a property to sit empty. And I bet if you polled the average Maynard person right now, they probably would not feel the same about the Coolidge School property as they do now, uh, meaning that I don't think as many people would be upset if we had to remove that building and actually, in the sense of progress and revenue increase to the town, because it's not really doing anything right now besides an additional bill for us. That's, we had to replace the roof, which is great, we got the food pantry down there, very, very big service that we provide to a lot of people in and out of Maynard. But at the end of the day, it's a building that sits empty most of the time. We have to heat it, we have to provide water, sewer, and we have to provide a roof.
Security.
And, yeah, security. And there's probably better uses for that piece of property, uh, that the town as a whole could benefit from.
If I could also say, because we're actually in and out of there a lot during the week for different things and we have, there have been numerous times, Aaron, so here, where we've called Aaron to say, here's a problem. So if we weren't there, you know, if it's empty, it's even going to be worse than this, or I'm afraid, those problems would exacerbate.
It's just amazing that, I mean, I've only been here 20 years, so I'm going to newbie the town. But, but you know, for a town that was not incorporated until 1871, we seem to have a lot of historic buildings that we even want to hold on to here for some strange reason. I mean, we're not nearly as old as the towns surround us, so, I mean, we have a pretty iconic historic building in the downtown, which is the mill that nobody else around really has. I think you have to draw a line sometimes about what you actually preserve economically and with some feasibility and, and what you actually turn over to progress.
I think that's kind of what, you know, in, in the formulation that I was thinking through Terrence is that you can state, hey, we'd love to see something that does this, but we want to see what you come back with.
We may get no interest and tell us, uh, as much as, as much as having another, uh, charrette on what to do with the building. The creative developers in the state may just vote for us.
So I know that slide holds a, a really, really key place in Mary's heart, because I was there the time that she actually went down.
Dwight did it with me, by the way.
All right, so, there's no harm in starting the process.
Bring you a warrant article before it's the third.
No harm to start the process to see where it goes and see what the, um, certainly before any takes place, there would be, you know, it would seem to be some sort of public meetings or discussions and see where it goes, but to start the process, given the, um, the discussion we just had with the schools and ongoing discussion with other people in town about, you know, financial need and certain makes sense to consider all our options and that's an option. And, oh, by the way, for anybody that's not familiar with this reuse committee, the, because some might say, oh, why don't we renovate? The, um, renovation ideas and those things were ridiculously cost prohibitive and I don't know that anyone could suggest they want with millions of dollars. Yes?
So if you guys put it out to see what might come of the building through a sale, does it, do the decisions get made amongst you guys or does it come out to the town where we have to say and what's going on with it?
It goes to...
Well, the town has to vote on whether they want to sell the property.
The town would have to, the town would, I think, yeah, the town...
So much specifically or in the general scheme of things?
The, the first step will be to go to town meeting in May and ask the town meeting to allow us to consider selling the property or give us permission to try to sell it. Then we create a request for proposals for people who say, I'll buy that property and I'm going to turn it into condos or a sports stadium or whatever. And we will structure that RFP so that we don't have to choose the highest price, the best offer. We could choose what we feel is the best value to the community.
Sure.
And when I say we, technically that decision can get made by the, uh, committee or the staff members who are managing the RFP. But given what this process is, it will be a community decision. There'll be either Selectmen or other members of the community on this decision-making team. It won't be made in a vacuum. You know, when we're buying salt or a truck or something, we do bids all the time. We just make the decisions because we know that this is a little bit more of a touchstone project.
Thank you for putting this on the agenda and like keeping track of it, because I totally forgot that was a potential revenue charge.
Thank you, Jack McKeen.
Thanks, Jack.
Nothing gets done in a vacuum, that's for sure. All right. So we're just...
We'll move it forward. You'll probably see it at the next meeting. Thank you.
All right. Draft controls. Hi, Kevin.
Uh, the draft controls are yours for, this is for the May annual town meeting. Um, and I believe all of them are annuals at this point. We haven't submitted any to you that are for special. They've been reviewed.
We must have got them, we got them like in the crude school, rather than... Sorry!
Fifty-nine percent.
Do you want to help us clarify the draft?
I'll help them in 2021.
The, uh, yeah, so the draft controls have been approved by, uh, our attorney for form and, uh, we're looking for the board to approve them for inclusion on the next one. These are all the routine ones, the ones that are easy for us to prepare well in advance. Um, I have a list in front of me of seven more kind of...
Can we approve them as a group?
Uh, I don't see why not. You're not, you're not approving the, uh, you're not, you're not voting for the article at the town meeting. You're adding it to the warrant.
An F, A through F.
There's two Fs.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
G, F, G, F.
Not on the attachment.
No, E, F, G. I'm looking at the table of contents.
Oh, we're looking on board docs, number eight is, we accept control F, even though we are used to control.
It's on my agenda, my detailed genius says F two, it goes F, G, F.
Right. When you look at the...
This one goes up to I.
Yeah, when you look in the document, it goes up to I.
Okay. That's a different one. No, that's, 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 is that the same one? No, that's...
No, that's annual, that's annual, because town, except town reporting.
I'm looking at the detail, I've opened the document, so if you're looking at something in board docs?
I'm looking right in here, yeah.
Oh, okay. I opened up the actual documents, the public calendar.
How many, how many, what controls would we, would we be, um, accepting?
One through seven and number eight would be to accept only. So one through seven would be accept and approve, A through G.
I thought it was A through I.
It's like A through I in here.
I have A through I on the deal of content.
But we only need to turn A through G, right? Because the other two, one's finance committee.
The finance committee reserve fund is...
Okay, so...
But that's H, so we have to do...
Make a motion that we move to accept and approve controls A through G.
Thank you.
The annual town meeting. Do we have a second? All those in favor of accepting the controls?
Thank you.
Thank you all. And then, um, move to accept control F to the finance committee reserve fund.
Not control, isn't that...
Well, it's H.
H, that's...
That's the real type of what Terrence pointed out.
Move to accept control H, the FinCon Reserve Fund.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
That is correct inside the document, it's wrong in the...
Okay. Excuse me.
I have one question on that motion. Is that consistent with the recommendation made at town meeting, I mean, at the Saturday meeting with the dollar amount reduced as...
To the 250,000, yes.
I don't, I don't know if we have the language in here. Uh, we do, okay, sorry. I didn't read the language.
And then do we have to do anything on I?
I is not actually submitted to you.
Yeah, it's not submitted to you.
Got it.
So that's that.
We, we try, we're trying to just update one document so we don't lose control of it, but A through G, we're ready for you prior to tonight.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting control H?
Thank you.
Becky, can you, when you guys, um, I'm just going to draw this out there before we go move on, before I forget, um, we have to redo the, the permit for the Earth Day Parade.
Yes.
So when we redo the Earth Day Parade permit with the language it stipulates that he, they'll talk to the police and Aaron and those involved, um, does anybody object to us affixing their signature stamp to that permit?
Nope.
Nope. Because I can scan it and show you what gets stamped and thank you.
So we can do it that way, that way we, because we've all agreed, we don't have to come back and sign it, so we can... Five stamps.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. I know I was going to forget that.
Appreciate that.
Terrence will be in.
I only need four out of five.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, so, thank you. We're all set for the special town meeting, all that's done and we've got the...
Yeah, yeah. At the next meeting, um, what Andrew will have ready for you is who, who's going to agree to do the motions and...
So if anybody wants to, um, we all, does everyone have a copy of the warrant for the special?
They're in the back of the room.
If anybody wants to go through it and if there's any particular articles anybody does or does not want to talk about or present, just, um, tell me, we'll, we, when we do them the next, the next time or the time after, we'll, I'll know.
All joking aside, do you want me to do the fire department as we discussed last time?
It was sort of a joke. Boy, Jason, the last two years, he missed meetings in a row and he got assigned all...
Jason got, Jason got, Jason got, you better, anybody, yeah, Jason got to add stuff.
All right. One of the recommendations was to have somebody close to the topic do the presentations and, uh, the chief of police, or, sorry, the, the fire chief is prepared, uh, as well as Selectmen Steele to, uh, take on that one. Our attorney on the marijuana will be, uh, in the house and she's prepared to speak on that with the level of detail that, uh, many of us would not, uh, be able to. And Bill Coleman, who drafted all of the, uh, bylaw amendments, uh, through the bylaw committee, has already indicated that he would be prepared to speak on any of them.
Can we, um, on the marijuana one, I know that we had, um, from the last time that we reviewed and approved the warrant articles, we just wanted to get clarification around the fee schedules and recognizing that all of this is still a bit of a moving target given where the control board is in their process. But I just want to make sure as we're thinking through the calendar, um, that we have time to, as the board, be as fluent as we need to be about, I, I mean, I think we have the correct, I believe we have the correct understanding of what were fees and then what were taxes and what we can do as the licensing authority versus what were the pieces that needed to get approved at the town meeting. But I just kind of want to have a chance and maybe if we have to do it offline, just go back through our previous discussions and just make sure we've got those Qs and As nailed.
I sent an email of clarification about a week ago. I'm not sure who had a chance to review it.
Okay.
But it does try to provide that clarification. I'd be happy to do it.
And I'll go back through all of the different emails I've gotten too, just to make sure I've got everything.
It was really...
There was some discussion last year or after one of our last town meetings with the town moderator, you know, his concern about who answered the questions and how the questions are answered and, you know, certain people being prepared and not being prepared and, you know, I think typically, at least in my opinion, that we've each gone into these meetings that, um, prepared and the people that we've had in attendance have been prepared to answer the questions as well. I think what you're not prepared for is some of the questions you're asked, you know, some of the questions, you can't anticipate some of the, you know, the direction of some of the questions that you receive up there based on individuals' personal thoughts, beliefs or opinions. So, I mean, we're prepared to discuss those things that pertain to an article that we're aware of and we are familiar with. If someone comes out of a, a, a different time zone or, you know, stratosphere to ask a question that totally doesn't fit the, um, the article or, you know, they're, they're so off base that it doesn't, it doesn't really have anything to do with anything we've discussed, of course we're not going to be prepared.
It may not matter.
And that happens, that will make a difference. It happens all the time. So I don't think we need to change the way we do anything. I wouldn't be concerned about changing things up. If, you know, once we know what particular article we're each going to talk about, we each, you know, we'll know what article it is and what their background is and what their history is and the talking points, but.
As important, I think, having those experts available in case you do get one of those stumpers. And, you know, Bill Coleman will certainly be there.
And that's, you know, that's part of, part of the reason, the main reason why town council is here to answer that to, you know, so we know, we can ask for people, oh, why do you keep asking town council a question? Well, you ask town council because she can tell you whether or not it's a relevant question or it's, if it's to the topic, so.
And I do think that once you get the assigned article, you have every opportunity to sit down with Andrew and or, you know, whoever has the information that's necessary. And we used to traditionally do that as part of the prep, you know, sit down with the town administrator for your three or four articles, whatever it happens to be, and his review would be prepared. To Chris's point, you cannot be prepared for every single question that might be tossed out there depending on what somebody's desire is for the day.
Andrew.
Someone brings you a bag of crazy in the room with them, there's nothing you can do about it.
Town council on standby. I feel like I know it really well. If I did do it, stuff that would work.
So.
He's the boss.
So what do you want with all that? What do you want? Were you complaining already?
No.
I haven't assigned anything yet.
I said I would take the bullet on the marijuana one because I know the law pretty well.
Have at it.
I had to go for work.
You're in.
With town council standing by.
So there's three. Yeah, so that's, that's three down the drain. Alright.
Under the pool school.
No, that's the next, that's.
That's in May.
The next.
Yeah, I'll do the May.
Yeah, so, oh, yeah, that's fine. I, I heard some interesting stuff from the, someone in Acton earlier. They're talking about that building. That's not a done deal yet either.
The dispenser?
Yeah, yeah.
There, yeah, the town? They've had a big, like, group of citizens trying to push a moratorium on it?
Yeah, trying to, no, not, they're trying to block the entire, any and all marijuana sales in Acton. They're looking, there's a group of people that are trying to push a moratorium through the town.
Which I don't think they're going to be successful on, given the state legislation on it. They can limit it and they can try to keep it restricted to medical.
Yeah. That's going to break straight down potty lines, is what they told me. They, I guess they have, she feels as though they have pretty defined Democratic and Republican sides in their town, whereas, you know, sometimes they're not so clear. But there's actual, actual structured groups that are fighting this marijuana battle in Acton.
They could, like, sample the product to sway some people.
I think they all need to sample it sometimes. Not my problem. But anyway, so we'll go with the articles. We'll, we'll settle next week what we're all going to talk about and Melissa's on marijuana. Or she's going to speak about marijuana. Alright. So.
Brownies will be in the back of the room.
So, yeah. Becky starts handing out gummy bears next week. Be careful. Alright, so Maynard Crossing Development, Sers, in the black shirts. Is that you two?
Well, probably Wayne.
Alright, Wayne.
Andrew, do you want to summarize or do you want me to? What would you like?
The content in here is pretty clear.
Yeah, the, so the executive content on Board docs is probably the most succinct way of looking at this. The MOA had some misleading phrasing.
Unintentional misleading?
Absolutely. Something from an earlier draft was consistent with what everyone involves. Understanding is that the building occupancy permits would be withheld until certain improvements on Parker Street were completed. But the final MOA, in one instance, referred to it as would have to be before the building permits are issued. You'd have to do the roadwork. And so we sat down with the attorneys, we sat down with the Capital Group folks, and everyone's in agreement that the, before occupancy permits are issued, not before building permits are issued, is the correct phrasing.
Is there going to be an amendment to the MOA so that?
That's what this request is, that our attorney draft a revision modification to the MOA that you would approve, Capital Group would agree to, and everybody just would follow.
So Angelo and John Witten are on the same page? And so far as?
Yes. Everybody's on the same page with this.
We spoke to the Capital. I pointed to Wayne because he met with them today.
Right, right. No, no, I'm only asking because when we, what I saw with them a while ago, it was kind of a question and John Witten wasn't available, but his Barbara was kind of, she was waiting to hear back from John.
Yeah, everybody's on the same page as far as I understand about this.
Did John write a written opinion on it or did John just give his ver?
We've had, we've had the discussion with him. He agrees that it's really the occupancy that's the key. And just to be clear, the only real confusing reference is to the 117 and 27 modifications. It doesn't talk about the other off-site modifications. Those are pretty clear as to when those need to be constructed.
And those have actually already been completed. So the ones that were creating the confusion are actually already done. So John Witten has not issued it yet and if the board is in agreement that this is an appropriate change, we'll have him write it and give it under your eyes.
It sounds like it was just a clerical error. So there's a meaning of the minds of what it should be. So it seems like an easy decision.
Yeah, we have older versions of the MOA that actually have it saying occupancy permit. So somehow it's.
Somehow the words got switched during the final phase of signatures.
I just don't remember if that was intentional.
So I can't, we went, we, Andrew and I and Bill and others talked about this quite a bit. We can't figure out how it could have been intentional because it doesn't make any sense. I mean, what it comes down to, if you, if you read the actual wording, it's saying, prior to the first building permit being issued, all of the roadway and traffic signal improvements at 117 and 27 should be constructed. So to my point as a practical engineer, to what avail is that, right? They're not using the site. It doesn't need access, it doesn't need that additional traffic capacity that the intersection's being upgraded to provide. So this doesn't make any sense. Normally, I mean, I work with developers all the time. And it's really the occupancy permit in which the mitigation is, needs to be completed. Because you need to provide additional occup, additional off-site adequacy, traffic adequacy for that. And you need to have it done before you start using the stores.
I mean. I mean, it's not going to happen if, it's not going, let's just put it this way. I don't have a problem with it taking place in, or authorizing it personally, but it's not going to happen if John Witten doesn't agree it's the right or the proper thing, so.
He is in agreement. He had a vacation scheduled for this week and he asked for a little more time to provide it and write it.
Okay.
We should have it by the end of the week.
Are there any objections to authorizing the?
We get John's written confirmation. I have no problem.
Okay. So all those in favor pending Mr. Witten's written approval? Okay.
As soon as he can get that.
So, I mean, we can, if you guys want, do you want his proposal written or you just want an email from him saying we're, he's in agreement with this? Because we had the conversation with him the other day.
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be a document that you and the Capital Group sign, so we'll come at the next meeting.
I don't, yeah, I don't need that. Just to start the process is all we're doing. Just an email back to town saying, yeah.
I'll talk to him tomorrow.
We agree with that and that's it. And then the legal language that we have to sign for and everything, that's not immediate. That will be, you know, I know, that's going to take a couple of weeks at least with him and Angelo's pace. Angelo's been looking at it three, four times and arguing no matter. Angelo, he argues that the sun came up this morning. Angelo, right.
Mr. Chairman.
So, well, well, yeah, that's, as long as John says that's good, we'll go ahead.
Talk to him tomorrow.
I'm sure he'll get the language.
The sun came up.
Exactly, yeah. If you'll upside him, bless him. He's a lawyer, that's what they do.
Thank you, folks.
They don't know that.
Thank you, Wayne.
Sorry, sorry, Melissa. Present company.
She's not a lawyer tonight.
She's no. So, I have the, everybody, the four pager, looks like, looks like Stephanie was busy with the town.
Thank you, Stephanie.
She's very busy.
It was good.
I have two quick things to add, if you don't mind. The art week that the state is sponsoring, the last week of April, first week of May, I don't know the exact dates. But the state is asking communities throughout the Commonwealth to participate in a celebration of art. The cultural commission here in town has reached out and we already have six organizations or people who have agreed to participate and they're expecting even more to sign on. So it looks like it's going to be a really fun event for Maynard. It falls during our already scheduled art walk dates. So it'll be a nice complimentary event in there. And the cultural commission or cultural council is very excited about it. And the other thing I wanted to mention quickly is that I'd like to schedule an executive session for our next meeting because of collective bargaining and two personnel contracts with Steph.
It's at the 20th?
Steph or it's staff?
Staff. Police and fire chief contracts are both up this spring.
Jesus, again?
Just for planning purposes, did you want a six o'clock start or six thirty?
I think we can do it in a half hour. It's, we're, I'm not going to be asking for digesting all the decision just to get it out in front of you for consideration and we'll be able to make the decision promptly in the future.
So six thirty?
Six thirty should do it.
Okay, I'll put it in my calendar.
You too.
The March 20th?
Yeah.
Yes.
I will miss the next meeting.
April 3rd.
April 3rd. So hosting it in Augusta, Georgia, and I will not be here.
We could FaceTime you.
I could FaceTime him from there, yeah. So, that's that. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Alright. I don't have anything. Just more snow coming tomorrow into Thursday, so good luck, Aaron. And hopefully it ends before the parking ban ends, the snow. And that's it. Yeah, March 15th, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Melissa, anything?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Donovan?
No, sir.
Ms. Steele? Ms. Steele, Ms. Steele, Cheryl?
No, just, it was great to see and hear about the results of the Taste this year. It was a great event. Good to see such a good turnout of folks, so glad that it did well for the foundation.
Okay, Mr. Gavin?
Yep, I want to congratulate the boys' basketball team for making the Central Massachusetts Division Four final, which is scheduled for Saturday. Don't know the time because I've seen like four different times. Girls' team was, I think, scheduled to play tomorrow night, but they're going to be, I'm sure, snowed out given the weather report. The other thing I wanted to comment on is, you may recall, we, we're doing this Maynard as a canvas thing with murals. And members of the cultural council that were involved in that process asked me to participate in the judging of the murals. And so I agreed to do it. And it's a very interesting process, given that, you know, they scored it electronically, but they shared with me the results and I'm not on the same wavelength as the artist because the large majority of the ones that I said yes, that I think was good for Maynard or good for that location, it knows for everybody else. Large, and the number, when the exact reverse was true, where I said no, the artist community was saying yes, so.
Is that, that's a result of the guy that came in and made the presentation, right? With, with the, all the different scenery and pictures from Iceland and different places. So that, the fact that he came and made his presentation, it's so, I mean, all the people that are seeing it, not necessarily what you're talking about, the same people, obviously it's, oh, murals, you know, murals make you look, it's like, it's not mural. It's, I understand it's mural, it's a mural per se. But when people around here think about a mural, they think about, you know, six kids with a can of spray paint. It's very different. And that's been a lot of, there's been a lot of chatter about it in the ridiculous social media sites that we have that float through this town and every other town, but there's just been a lot of noise about it and, you know, it's not, truly not, you know, urban murals. They're, they're murals with a purpose and they, they kind of make it a difference, a different, a different statement.
Yeah, they're interesting. They, they utilize the design of the building. They, you know, so the windows are incorporated in there. They, some of them, they give these descriptions as to why they did what they did. Some of them are relative to Maynard history. Some of them are, are other, you know. Some of them are somewhat urban looking, you know, when you really, you know, if you just take a step back, it looks like graffiti, but there's a purpose behind it, so.
Sixty-one submissions, I believe.
Yeah, there were a lot of them.
So what's the next step in the process?
I think they're tabulating the results and then they're going to come. I don't know what the next step. They may, they may be looking for some money that I don't know where that money might be.
So this came through the Economic Development Committee and the BEAT program. And the intention is, once they select a winner, they figure out how much it's going to cost and then they're going to ask the BEAT program to fund it. So that's, you know, should be coming, I would guess, in the next month or so?
Yeah, I would imagine they're getting close. I just, I had to, I had to go to a training session as to how to score, so. But then the last thing was the, there's been chatter this week or the last couple of weeks also on sidewalks. And the, you know, people complaining about, you know, the condition of our sidewalks here in Maynard. And I referred through social media to, you know, basically talk up what their, what their priorities are so that Aaron can then utilize that as part of his planning process, look and utilize, you know, everything else that we have through the scientific methods that we use. But there is some concern. But again, it falls into the same category. You only have so much chapter, chapter ninety money. You only have so much budget money and you have to prioritize, so. And I think there was a little bit of consternation that the grant that we got for, as a result of that discussion.
Complete Streets.
For Complete Streets was not going to be utilized to do, you know, Summer Street.
Now, I believe it is. There's.
Well, not, not the spots that they're.
Not my corner.
Ah.
I was kidding.
Not the stretch, not the entire stretch of Summer Street.
Absolutely not. No, that wasn't the.
So, just be, you know, I think the board's probably hearing the same chatter and just, we have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, it's, it's an educational process there and it's, it's not as easy as people think it is.
Sure. When things settle down a bit, maybe we can take fifteen or twenty minutes at a future meeting and review that Complete Streets process. It was a three-stage program. And that third stage repeats every year with a capital request.
I also think too that there's just a more general piece because I almost put in some ways the, the assessment around, like, which sidewalks is right there with the assessment of which streets. And so like, for me, it was very beneficial, for example, of knowing, like, no, there's like a formal approved rating system through which we determine which street really, and I think in some ways it's just kind of like that, that type of awareness building among people. To have them, I mean, that, that helped me a ton in my own neighborhood, for example.
And some of these, like this grant is hopscotching over some of these other programs. So when the money's there, you jump and you take it. But if we were funding it on our own, we might have chosen different.
Right.
But, you know, the grant led us to that specific location.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Sex.
All in favor?
Well, we all were in favor of second base.
Linda?